Township Council to order. Roll call, Mr. Lauer.
This is Mayor.
President.
Mr. Thigl.
Mr. Harkure.
Here.
Mr. Ball.
President.
Mr. Berquist.
Here.
Mr. Cozer.
Here.
Mr. Riss.
Here. Raise and pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the Father, and to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit. To the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, approval of the minutes from the previous meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Other discussion in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Special reports, Mr. Lauer.
Before we get to the special reports, I just would like to point out that the Fire Department not only is good friends with Santa Claus, but apparently they're also very good friends with the Easter Bunny. I give Chief McLaughlin and his guys a lot of credit. This is something that they did on their own that was extremely well received in the community. And it was a good break, I think, from all the other things that are happening around us.
Absolutely. Thank you, Easter Bunny.
With that, I'm going to turn it over to Chief McLaughlin. Thanks, Mr. Lauer.
I'll sit here for a few minutes. Good evening, everybody. So over the last couple of weeks, we've provided updates routinely via email. And to get the chance to come in person and kind of discuss those updates, converse back and forth, and answer any questions you guys may have. So a couple of notes here. Our Emergency Operations Center has been up and running since March 9th. Through that, the center was not 100% complete. We're obviously still doing things on a little-by-little basis. And one of the big things we've accomplished here in the last week is we've actually had its own phone line dedicated to the Emergency Operations Center that will answer all the time. If it's not answered in the EOC, it rings to the fire station and to the duty cell phones from the on-duty fire personnel. For the record, that number is 724-942-5044. It is answered at all times, and you can call that line specifically with Peterstownship-related COVID-19 questions. The Fire Department specifically has also hosted trainings, meetings, and other events via Zoom. We've actually had a lot of success in keeping all 52 members engaged through this effort. We are constantly communicating with the other departments inside of Peterstownship in order to streamline ordering of supplies and reduce duplicate orders. Mr. Lauer came to me last week and said, hey, make sure that everybody has what they need, and they're not ordering the same thing twice. So if we need hand sanitizer, and Public Works needs hand sanitizer disinfectant, make sure we're ordering as a municipality instead of each department. So far, we've been successful in that, and we're going to send out weekly needs assessments to all the departments for those orders. We're holding weekly meetings with the Township EMS Department. We're covering topics such as personal protective equipment, their protocols, practices, and procedures. We've also given them a couple dozen sample protocols and procedures to assist them with their employees. We've also been providing those protocols and procedures to other township departments, sharing what we have, so we're not duplicating those services as well. Most recently, we've procured washable surgical masks to issue to each police, fire, and Public Works employee that are reporting to work each day. The mask is the one that I have here. The township's own Becky Softko has made those masks in her spare time, and it's given us the ability to issue one to every employee and make sure they're washing them as part of their uniform washing procedures and deep on each day. Today, we've also provided the Planning Department with personal protective equipment. The Municipal Building, the Public Works Department, the Police Department, last week were all supplied with disinfectant, five gallons each. We've applied for and granted access to the Amazon COVID-19 store. If anybody's an Amazon member, they may see a little tagline at the heading that says, if you're an agency-eligible, click here. We filled out the form, applied for it. We were granted access to that. What that means is we're able to buy supplies through the municipality that aren't available to the normal consumer. Through that, most recently, we have procured hand sanitizer, some of which I brought today, to share in the other township public buildings as well. We've been putting out constant, consistent, fact-based messages between all of our media outlets. So if we want to communicate the same message at all times, it's important for us to make sure that we're communicating that message internally. Big hats off to Tom, to Ryan, and everybody that's helped us put out those messages in a consistent manner. Just with those interactions, in the last seven days, we've reached over 22,000 people on social media. Much of it was due to that Easter Bunny right there, but through that Easter Bunny, we were able to provide messages such as proper social distancing. We will come to you as the Easter Bunny so that you can obey the stay-at-home order, so on and so forth. So we're putting the right message out as a community. This week, on Wednesday, we're going to launch the Neighbors Helping Neighbors program, sponsored in conjunction with the Rotary, McMurray Rotary, and the Meals on Wheels of the Crossroads. We're going to be putting together the Media Blitz and putting it out on Wednesday, and a special thanks to Detective Caruso from the Police Department for helping us out with the background checks. What we're doing with that is we're combining with Rotary, Meals on Wheels, to identify seniors in the community that might not be able to shop for supplies themselves or that are at high risk of going out and shopping. We've already had a few outside of the program that we've helped out. What the Rotary has are volunteers that are not of risk, that are willing to go out and shop for these seniors. And lastly, like we said, the Easter Bunny did visit. It was an event that was pulled together in about 16 hours, something that we were very, very, very pressured into doing so by a lot of the Peterstownship buzz talkers. And I'm the last one to know anything about social media, but I was approached by some of the firefighters saying, hey, there's a big demand for this. It's something that we might want to do. And with their help, our department was able to pull it together within 16 hours. Again, largely thanks to Parks and Rec, who we contacted on a Saturday, Tom, who we contacted on a Saturday, to put everything together to make things happen at 10:00 AM Easter Sunday. Does Council have any questions or anything that still needs addressed?
I do.
Yes, ma'am.
You talked earlier about the training, and you mentioned a number of people. Who is doing the training throughout the township departments to make sure that they know protocols? You said you gave them protocols. How is that being handled as far as training, documenting the training, and making sure that people are doing it?
Sure. I am, when we give somebody the mask, so when I provide a department head the mask, I give them all of my documentation that I have with how to dawn and things like that, proper dawning-doffing procedures. We're leaving it up to the department to trickle that down the ladder, if you will, to their employees. But that training is started with us and ending with them.
So in the Police Department, for instance, every officer has gone through an online COVID-19 training. In addition to that, there is a written procedure that has been distributed to each of them, and they have acknowledged, received that, as well as demonstrated knowledge of that. And then, in part, it's the way, like, for instance, in the Police Department, how the work is now structured that is providing protection to the employees. So you have four squads of police officers in the Police Department. They're no longer reporting to the same location, so that they're not interacting with each other. They're reporting to four different locations. One in the police station, one in the room, that community room behind the police station, one in the multipurpose room at the library, and one at the tennis center. So, you know, in trying to do that, the idea is to separate them so that, in fact, if a squad has a problem, we don't lose the entire department. So, you know, from that perspective, I think they are doing a fairly good job. The other thing that they're doing that the Fire Department does as well is every one of those vehicles gets disinfected prior to somebody using it. They're assigning limited numbers of people to those vehicles so that you're not having people go across vehicles and have a problem that way. In the Public Works Department, the Public Works employees are now reporting to three different locations in the morning. Nobody is sharing a truck to get to a job site. All the jobs that are chosen are jobs that allow for the type of social distancing that's being recommended. Masks were provided to the Public Works Department, but these are these type of cloth masks, so I'm not sure that a whole lot of training is needed for how to place those on.
This is a, and we've provided with that email today as well, if any of the department heads had, it's pretty self-explanatory, but knowing that the blue goes out, the white goes in, or whatever it may be, but so that you're seeing the blue. With these, they are, they were purchased as kits by Becky and put together in a manner that is consistent with the CDC guidelines, making sure that we have the proper protection and not just something that we threw together last minute, providing them instructions on wash, that they could hand wash or wash with their uniforms, et cetera, making sure that it's done properly and in a manner that's consistent across all departments.
Thanks for your explanation. I have one other question related to the Peterstownship in particular, and I think the Easter Bunny program was really good. But I, I'm concerned a little bit about whether or not people are taking their social distancing seriously. My experience has been seeing people out and by, going from house to house, congregating. We do have, from what I understand, at last count, 69 confirmed cases in our county. Can you tell us, are there confirmed cases in Peters? And of course, not where or who, but just to make sure people understand that we're not immune. Can you give any insight so people do realize that this is still a potentially serious situation?
In short, yes and no. So the PA Department of Health is not pushing out information as to where these cases are specifically, yet. That is information that may become available specifically to first responders for that reason only, to make sure that they're going into a situation that they know and to protect themselves. So there is no official count through the state for Peterstownship. What I do know is we have responded to calls with possible COVID-19 infections and with confirmed COVID-19 infections. So as to where they were, that I can't discuss.
No.
Because of him and everything like that. But much like almost every community in Washington County and almost every community in Allegheny County, it is here.
So one of the things that Chief McLaughlin is indicating is in fact something that is occurring. The Pennsylvania Department of Health is not going to share information by municipality with a contact inside of the county. So that information will be there. Whether Washington County chooses to share that, I have no idea. But I think the thing to keep in mind, because, and that's the reason why in your docket I've included information from the Allegheny County Health Department, because, you know, the fact of the matter is we border Allegheny County. So if you go to Upper St. Clair, there are 15 cases in Upper St. Clair as of this weekend, which is 7.8 cases per 10,000. If you go to Bethel Park, there are 16 cases, which is five cases per 10,000. And if you go to South Park, there are 10 cases, which is 7.5 per 10,000. You know, our population's 22,500. We share a border with these communities. There's no reason not to think that in Peterstownship, you are looking at somewhere between 10 and 15 cases. Whether, you know, we know that or don't know that empirically, the fact of the matter is, I think that's what you're looking at right now.
I appreciate that. Like I said, I just, I think that it is important for people to continue to take precautions.
I think as a region, and I'll include this region as southwestern Pennsylvania, I think we're doing a better job than average around the country, from the numbers and statistics I have comparative to the eastern part of the state, to states in the south. But how much is enough? You can never go far enough. And like I said at our last meeting, the message kind of gets trickled down from the top and with us in practicing what we preach and making sure that we're taking these measures and that the community's taking this emergency seriously, so that our residents get that indication as well.
Well, you can share as much information as you choose, and people will do what they want. And just hopefully, the message is getting through that the community takes precautions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So one of the things that I was asked to do was to attempt to begin to discuss the potential impacts on the township as a result of COVID-19, particularly as it relates to our budget. So, you know, the reality of this is that we've only, since the middle of March, begun this idea of social distancing and its impact that it's had on businesses. And so you really, at this point in time, can't really see the impact in the data that is readily available to us. The thing about it is, we certainly know our revenue stream quite well. We understand what is contained in our budget with regard to expenditures and the nature of those expenditures. And as a result of that, I think, you know, I think it is possible to reach certain conclusions. So one of the things that is a little bit unique about Peterstownship is that Peterstownship has had a long history in its financial policies of maintaining a fund balance of at least 15% of revenues. And in practice, our balance has far exceeded that 15%, which is designed in part to provide a cushion for normal operations and provide cash flow while you're waiting for tax revenues to come in. But it's also designed to provide some cushion when you have, you know, something either in terms of expenditures or revenues that was not anticipated. The other thing, the PeterTownship budget has, for many, many years, included a sum of $1 million that's unappropriated, and it resides inside the Capital Project Fund. And that truly was set aside for unanticipated disruptions of revenues or the deferred emergency expenditures. And we have, in the past, relied upon that to be able to do some projects that we could not have anticipated throughout the year. The township's budget also includes $725,600, which sits as a CD, and it is set aside for the purposes of funding post-retirement employee benefits. And quite frankly, we're one of the few communities that actually sets aside money to handle their post-retirement benefits. And we certainly don't want to tap that money for a different purpose, but it sits there and can be reprogrammed if needed. And then finally, the Capital Helium Fund is budgeted to have a balance at the end of the year of $1 million. And when you combine those three balances together, that represents nearly 12% of the total budget for 2020. So the township, unlike other municipalities whose situation is not as robust, the township, I think, is going to be able to weather the storm. It isn't that there will not be an impact. There will be an impact, and we're going to know exactly what that impact is by the middle of July. But I don't think it's going to create a dire situation in terms of our finances. You know, I think, you know, in terms of revenues, it was, you know, this is a table right out of the budget, and it provides you an idea of the sources of revenues across all funds. And the two that I believe naturally are going to be impacted is the earned income tax, as well as that category, other taxes. And other taxes is primarily the local services tax. So in terms of the earned income tax, you know, it's 1% on wages, and I think important, in our case, also net profits. If you look at what was reported through the end of March, we're actually running slightly ahead of where we would project to be. That's why, I think, because we haven't really seen the impact yet. But one of the things that I think will mitigate the impact on our earned income tax sum is the nature of the workforce in Peterstownship. You know, in 2019, 76% of wage earners had incomes in excess of $100,000. And if you look at the information, the demographics from the last two census, what you see is that over 50% of the wage earners are employed in managerial or professional occupations. And the reason why I think that is important is that I believe this class of employee is probably in a better position to be, having maintained their job from being able to work at home. So I think there's going to be an impact, but I don't think it's going to necessarily be the same impact that you might see in a community where, like, you know, like in the Mon Valley, or even actually over in Monroe River where I live, where people hold a whole lot of jobs where they're working with their hands, and they need to be at that place of employment to actually earn a living. So if you look at that number and you assume that there was a 10% drop, and to put that in perspective, and because this is not the way it's going to happen, but to give it, you know, to put that in perspective, a 10% drop would mean that for 35 days, nobody in Peterstownship earned anything. It would be that kind of scale that it would take to have a 10% drop in that revenue. That's not what's happening, and I don't think that's what's going to happen overall. I think what's going to happen is there's going to be a diminishing in the amount of earnings people have. We have a lot of people who work on commission a year. There's a lot of people who receive bonuses towards the year-end, and I think that is part of what you're going to see as an impact that's going to go over the entire year. In terms of the local services tax, the reality is there shouldn't be a drop in the local services tax. The local services tax is a $47 tax. It's levied by the township. And once you earn $12,000, all $47 is owed. The reality is that that's not how that tax is collected. That tax, from a taxpayer's perspective, looks like a $52 tax, but the school district receives $5. And it's taken out in equal shares out of your paycheck each and every time. And so if you're like Peterstownship, where we have 26 pays in a year, $2 comes out of your paycheck. I will tell you, and we know this from the Washington County Tax Selection Districts, most employers don't know how that tax is supposed to work. And they take out that same amount. And if you don't work, they don't take any money out. And the problem is the amount that any one taxpayer owes is so small that doing the liquid tax collection on that is, doesn't make a whole lot of sense. So I think you're going to see a dip in the local services tax. I don't know how significant that's going to be. I think a lot of that depends on how quickly people get back to work. The other place where I do think that you're going to see impact are fees. You know, the Park and Rec Department generates, and the library generates a significant amount of fees in any one given year. And this year, it's budgeted at $435,000. But the other side of that is, when those fees aren't collected, those associated program expenses don't occur either. So to what extent one offsets the other is something that we're going to have to pay attention to. The only other tax that may be impacted is the de-transfer tax. But we, that de-transfer tax has always been a tax that is unpredictable in any one given year. So last year, we collected $2.2,278,000. We budgeted that tax this year at $1,600,000. So it may well be that what we experienced this year is a windfall, but it would seem to be that we ought to be able to beat that budgeted number. We are still seeing a fair number of clean letter requests. We have a fair number of building permits sitting downstairs that have been processed and are waiting to be issued. So from a revenue side, I think we're going to see an impact, but I don't think it's going to be dire. What I would suggest, though, is that we ought to seriously consider deferring a whole series of capital projects, not eliminating them, but deferring them until at such point in time we have a better idea of what our revenues will be for the year. The exception to that, and that I would recommend that we ought to be going ahead with, and this is not unlike what a number of other municipalities are doing. We ought to go ahead with our repaving program. We ought to go ahead with our storms repair programs. Deferring that and/or eliminating that for this year, although it has a significant impact, it also has a significant impact on the other side. When we don't pay attention to that, it gets more costly in future years. And in this particular year, one of the reasons why you'd want to do it, if for no other reason, is Thompsonville Roads repaving is on there. And if you've been on Thompsonville Road, all the utility work, that project needs to get done this year. If in fact, Council wants to save funds by shrinking the road program, my suggestion would be not to do that this year, but do that in 2021 as part of the budget process. I think we have the funds to be able to do this, and we ought to move ahead with it. The other projects that are sitting out there to be done are Rolling Hills Drive, which, of course, we currently have under contract, and that is being paid for with bond monies. The other capital project that is included in the budget, and I realize this is one that we're going to have a discussion on at some later point to decide whether we want to go ahead with it, is the design for the Aquatic Center. But again, that project is being paid for with bond money, and whether we go ahead with it or not won't impact the Then, I guess finally, you know, we had talked the last time around about what we were doing with staffing. Those staffing changes in light of the current situation have been implemented. I had the opportunity to speak to people before they refer load. Everyone understands the situation, and that, you know, I can't say that that was the most pleasant thing I've ever done, but I do think that what we've come up with is a process that recognizes the value of our employees, and has left them in a position where, from an economic standpoint and from the standpoint of their health insurance, I think that they're going to be in a reasonable position. So, do you have any questions?
Oh, one thing, on the earlier screen, just raised a question in my mind. We usually have criteria for grants. Let's say you need to spend money by such and such a date. Do we have any of those grants that could be in jeopardy with regard to looking for relief?
We have a couple of projects that are being funded by grants. And I want to talk about the projects that we have under contract and whether or not Council wants to move ahead with them. One of the projects is this project down here at the intersection. The, although we have not, we've already received an extension once on that project, I don't know whether we would be granted an extension if we don't get that work done. It's under contract right now.
Paul, what's our share? That's the bottom line. What would our share be?
Oh, well, on this project, if we don't, see, I don't know, if we don't complete that whole project, I don't know whether we're going to have to refund.
Yeah, we may have to refund all of it.
All of it. And see, in this project, quite frankly, we ought, let me talk about the projects I think we ought to be moving ahead with. So we have under contract this intersection down here. And that contractor's prepared to do it. And what that work involves is milling East McMurray Road and repaving it. Because if you, if remember, the section between Thomas and Valley Brook has rumble strips in it. So they're going to mill that entire section, repave it, and realign it. That contractor is willing to move ahead with that project. We have the ability, because we're a local government, to have that project done. And quite frankly, I don't, I think a paving project is an ideal project in terms of this whole idea of social distancing. You don't have to worry about. about someone being within six foot of the paper, or the roller, or things like that.
Or the cars being jammed up.
And, and see, that project was originally designed to be done at night, and what the contractor is pointing out to us correctly is if you had let me go now, there's so little traffic on East McMurray Road, I could do this in a matter of days and be out of the way. So personally, I think we ought to tell them to go ahead with that project. On the, on the, the docket tonight is the award of the contract for the, for the paving program. Again, I think paving is one of those things where you can maintain social distancing. I think we ought to be going ahead with that project.
Well, on top of that, Paul, I don't think you're ever going to see oil as low as it is right now, so.
Yeah.
That's why it's only being worked.
Yeah. But you know what, though, and, and we'll talk about it, but that wasn't reflected in our pricing. And then the third project is the one we have under contract at Rolling Hills Drive, and we have in place the permit from DEP, the permit from the Army Corps of Engineers. We have the highway occupancy permit been issued for that. And the only thing we're waiting on is an approval from the Washington County Conservation District, an agency that we work with well. And I would assume that by the end of this week, that that may well be in place. And I think, quite frankly, the township ought to direct the earth mover to proceed with that project, because just like you can do the intersection at Route 79 and do it safely, you can move earth on the site and do it safely. It isn't as though anybody's going to be near the operators of that equipment, so.
Could I ask a clarifying question? You made a comment that since we're a local government, we can allow this stuff to go on. Recently, the state shut down the majority of their projects, and they just reopened, uh, Nardoy Warrick just reopened four of them. Are you saying that, that we don't have to stop that work? Do we need to get approval from anybody? We can move ahead and do whatever we want, as long as we, as a council, agree to proceed and, and get a contractor who's willing to do the work?
Yes, because the thought was, when the state implemented the restrictions on work, is that municipalities, school districts, and authorities should use their judgment so that they only proceed with projects that can be done within the guidelines of social distancing. And so for instance, one of the projects that's underway and, and has only, was only shut down for a couple of days while the sanitary authoritative determination is the extension of the sewer line that's occurring along Valley Brook Road that will eventually be needed to service the high school. There's no problem with social distancing when you're, you're constructing that, that trunk line, and so they moved ahead with that project.
I wasn't aware of that.
Yeah. So, you know, that is a question that I would like to get a consensus from council is, do you have a problem moving ahead?
No, I think.
No.
Probably in the autumn time.
Okay.
And you're right about East McMurray Road. I could attest to that.
And, and I think, quite honestly, for the people who live near there, I think it would be much better to do that during the day than do it at, at nighttime.
Two other things. Could I ask more other question about operations? You didn't really reflect anything about how money for daily operations is being impacted. Do you anticipate costs to go down for daily operations? We're not using as many supplies, or because of having the requirement to buy precautionary PPEs and all that? What, what impact?
I, I think it will go down, but quite frankly, those kind of costs are, are incidental to the cost of salaries and the cost of capital projects. It's that what really drives the budget.
Right.
But I don't, but I would assume that there are a lot of things that we're not going to be able to do until everything opens back up again.
Okay, and to the question, the comment about salary, we're six weeks into this, and you outlined what we are doing now, and up to this point, I think we need to explain that until this point, we have been handling stuff differently. Do you want to speak to that?
Well, we've been doing different things across all departments and, and have to make sense out of this. Certainly the library staff and the, and the Park and Rec staff have been most impacted. Those buildings aren't open. The library has an online presence, and they support that online presence, and that takes people to do that. Within the planning department, we have modified schedule for the building inspectors, but there's building inspectors here, at least one every day, and we are processing building permits. We are still going out and doing code enforcement. In fact, if anything, we have now driven the entire township with regard to that. We have some people working from home, like Seth Coons. Every day, Ed Zook is here in the, in the building. In the engineering department, two of the individuals work from home, and there's a whole series of projects that they've been working on, and Mr. Sumitis is in the building. The administrative staff have been in and out of the building as needed. We're still processing bills, as you can see tonight, there's lots of them. We're still processing payroll. In the police department, they're, they're actually, because of the schools are closed, they're actually staffed at a higher level right now because those school resource officers are, are back inside the department and are, are patrolling. The public works department is back. It's just, in terms of how they're being dispatched, it's slightly different. Certainly no change inside the, inside the fire department, so.
Do you want to use this particular time to talk about a couple of things that we had talked about potentially postponing events?
Yes. So, you know, one of the, one of the biggest celebrations in Peters Township, and I don't, you know, I've been here for a long time, and it's a, it's never been, not, not had, is Community Day. But I do not believe that there is a way at this point, at the end of June, that we will safely have Community Day. And if you did have Community Day, I think there would be a lot of people who would choose not to want to attend, because certainly by that point in time, there will neither be a vaccine or necessarily a treatment. So the Parks and Rec Department, Michelle Harmel, is suggesting that we cancel Community Day. And she's suggesting that it be canceled as opposed to reprogram, because if you were to try to move it into the fall, there are a whole list of other programs that, that would have to be canceled at that point in time. You know, the, the, their capacity to do hard-scale program is, is somewhat limited. So, you know, you have the haunted trail and the trick and trick or treat program they have. There's a whole set of fall programs, and her preference would be to maintain those programs and.
I agree.
Do Community Day next year.
There's really no choice.
You've got athletics that draw a lot of attention.
Everything else. I mean, everyone's weekends, once you get into September, are all booked up anyway, so I just think we cancel it for this year.
Would there be any thought possibly doing it in August just before school reopens? Presuming school reopened, to kind of bring the community back together? That would be like around the middle of August. As I agree, fall would not be a good time to push it, but.
I, I can be honest with you. And again, I don't know how anybody knows, but I will be shocked that we're, that at that point in time, you'd want to get 7,000 people from the community all together in one place.
That's not going to happen. That's not going to happen.
It's not going to happen. Yeah. I, I just don't think there's going to be enough change at that point.
I think there is a potential, if things have calmed down, that people are going to want to get out of town and escape to some sort of vacation remedy.
You really need to do, you know, they slap the Easter bunny together in a day, so, you know, you should be able to slap together, you know.
But I think.
I think the Community Day.
I think the problem is that to put on something like Community Day takes months of planning. I mean, people need to plan their booths, and they need to commit to vendors, and, you know, if, if you don't know by June, it'd be hard to have something in August.
Well, and that was part of the reason I was asking, because we're talking about vendors who are small businesses who are already being affected. You know, if we eliminate that, I have no idea what kind of revenue people generate from that. But, you know, is that, it was just a question because, you know, again, those people are going to lose out on the opportunity to be exposed to the crowd. It was just a thought, as opposed to.
I would assume the Memorial Day Parade.
I have, I have not heard from the VFW, so I don't, I don't know. The other, the one thing, before we leave Community Day, that I was suggesting to Mr. Paul, and we would have to, to, to look into this, what, why, just as the Easter bunny showing up would, is a, something to celebrate, it may be that you want to have the fireworks displayed, not to invite people to it, but to have it so that people could see it. So instead of maybe doing it at Peterswood Park, to do it inside of Rolling Hills Park, at that ridge of line across the top of it. And I think there'd be a whole lot of the community who could see that from wherever they were. And so that's a possibility, the.
Yeah, but you can wait until July 4th, and it's on TV. You can watch the POMs, the Buzz the POMs and all that. And, and all that's going to do is cause people, well, you can come to my house, because I got a great view for my dad.
You know what, you might be right there. You might be right there.
Because I thought about that, but the more I thought about it, I was like, I don't think that's a good idea, just from social distancing perspective. So that's my, I mean, that's my two cents.
I think you're right on that. It's, people would be.
I have a different thought relative to the farmer's market, though.
Yeah.
I spoke to the pastor at the church today about the farmer's market. Their intention is not to open the farmer's market as they normally would, but rather than to wait until such time as businesses reopen, and then get opening the farmer's market then. And I think that's a reasonable approach. He also expressed to me that he realized if they were to open it, they would take on an obligation to make sure that they do it in a way that it's safe, so, and recognizing the need to disinfect things. And so I, I think what, what, they've at least thought about it. I think their approach is not, not a bad one. So. The other one that Michelle was suggesting that we consider canceling now is the touch a truck program that occurs in July. That actually gets about a thousand some kids.
Well, there's no choice.
It's touching a truck.
That's got to go.
Yeah, so what Michelle and I both thought made sense was to, in terms of these programs that you see here, is to cancel programs through May. And then when we got to May 1st, to look at what's sitting out there two months in advance, and see whether or not it made sense to do those programs or not do those programs. But.
We can do that, or.
Yeah. I think the boobies in the park of the concerts, that may be problematic. I don't know. I don't know.
I think the senior trip, June 3rd, might be kind of, out of, you know, who knows what's going to be around then.
Yeah. Michelle's suggesting that we ought to cancel all senior programming. You have a vulnerable population, and like, that's, that trip is actually a bus trip to Zanesville, Ohio. I don't think that's a great idea.
Yeah. And the senior picnic, senior, yeah.
A minor thing, but I happen to think about Earth Day, because I've been working with the EQB, and apparently the EQB has been trying to come up with some ways where they might be able to encourage people to observe the nothing. And they're supposed to be having a, a virtual meeting tomorrow, and are going to be sending recommendations. Now, we don't meet again until after that, so I presume Mr. Wilson will filter that out to you, and then we can kind of talk about it. But again, everybody's outside. They could go pick out their own vehicles.
Yeah, that's what, yeah, they've been talking about this stuff. Is there anything else?
Monica, you had a couple of things on that list.
We, we covered most of them.
Cover those, okay.
Mr. Lewis hit the farmer's market, and then we talked about cleanup day. And then if we're going to wait until the beginning of May to talk about other events, I, maybe by that time, we'll know what to talk about related to opening the library and the CRC again, or what.
Yeah, I think, I think that rolling approach is a, is a good way to do it. It's.
One of the things we've challenged both Myra and Michelle is, let's start working with your professional organizations and our, our partners in neighboring communities to start to talk about how it is you open that building back up, you know, because I think there's some physical changes that may need to be made to how the.
Well, I, I think when they, when the declaration of closing the schools, I think that means through June. So.
Yes.
I mean, we know we're down till then.
Yeah. Okay. Other things that I had, I know there, I, I got the impression there was some interest in, in passing the declaration of a disaster emergency. The declaration, declaration that's in your docket is exactly the, the framework that you'll see in all these emergency declarations. And as I indicated before, what it really is intended to do is to provide the township manager with enough flexibility to acquire equipment and supplies, if in fact that is needed. Personally, we could pass this if you want, but it's a practical matter. It, it, it isn't something that we, we need right now, because we, we certainly, given the nature of what this emergency is, it doesn't result in expenditures of tremendous sums of.
I would be opposed to passing it from the standpoint of sounding like it's more of an alarm to the community than it needs to be.
But I would have to disagree, because my understanding is that it allows us to apply for some reimbursement for the PPEs that we've already purchased, not future, not we can, of course, but, but what we've expended related to PPEs, any overtime, any other things that are related specifically to this, the activities. And there's been significant, I presume, significant activity with preparations and training and, you know, all of that. So that would be one of the reasons I would support doing it. I, I would not, I think we can explain it to the township and the residents that this is a means to an end for us.
But you're talking about hundreds of dollars that have been expended, as opposed to thousands of dollars expended.
I, you haven't shared that, so I don't know what the number is. So, but I'm just saying, in general, it's not only supplies, but it's labor hours, it's other things. You are in a position to know what we've expended.
Well, that's why I have not recommended that we need to do this. If council wants to do this, we can.
That'll shoot.
From an expense standpoint, we can be reimbursed for those expenses. This emergency is far from over. It's going to be another six, eight months, maybe even a year. We may even have continuation into this cycle into next year as well. There is a financial reason to do it, and it's for reimbursement. Another reason to do it is because I don't think, as emergency responders, we have a supply sufficient for the township. We do have a shortfall. And are we in a dire situation? The answer is no. But I've just submitted today our second resource request through the county and through the region to acquire personal protective equipment from PMA and FEMA. One of the checkboxes that they want you to, to look at is have you declared a municipal disaster, meaning have, have we done this? And based upon that, we haven't yet.
Would that help you? Is that actually, is that a determining factor?
Is it the bottom line? No. Would it help? Yes.
So you would prefer it?
I would prefer it. And, and the reason I prefer it is it can do no harm in passing, but it can only do good bypassing.
Well, then I'll make a motion that we adopt the declaration of disaster emergency.
What's that?
Okay, discussion? In favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we are a disaster.
The only, the last thing that I wanted to talk about was, and it's actually an issue that we have now gotten resolved. When the Commonwealth instituted the stay-at-home order, it shut down a number of businesses. One of those businesses that were, were impacted was, of course, the construction trade. We had some issues with regard to exemptions that had been issued. We have now clarified that through the regional director, DCED. And I think we now have all of our, our builders with a common understanding about what it is they can do. And what that is they can do is to take steps to secure their building and, and protect the construction by enclosing it with roofs and windows and walls. So to the extent you see construction activity occurring in Peters, that's what's supposed to be happening, so.
I don't find much logic in any of that stuff.
There isn't.
Because you could drive, you could drive around in an Uber, right, where you're in a confined place, but you can't have two guys come out and pour concrete, put a driveway in, something you're trying to make money on, you know.
Actually, they can come out and pour concrete and put a driveway in, because that is permitted as a landscaping activity. What you can't do.
Yeah, but don't you have to be a landscaper to do that?
I don't think so.
There's a lot of landscapers now. I can tell you that.
Yeah, but I'm sure there are, but I'm just saying. But I'm just, just saying that there's a lot of inequity in this.
When was the last time you saw two landscapers get a hug each other after you did a great When was the last time you saw two landscapers get a hug each other after they did a great job of...
Well, that's what I'm saying. I mean, those guys wanna work.
Just this afternoon.
So Paul, when you talked earlier about the building inspectors checking, are, is someone going around and managing? Are we expected to manage these people?
Yes, we are. So what, what the, to the credit of the building inspectors, when we finally came to a common understanding, we contacted every builder. And one of the things we offered to them, and some of them have taken us up on this, is to go out to the site and look at the structure and make a determination about what can and can't be done. And so, I, I, I think they've done a good job with that.
There was legislation moved from the House to the Senate today that, again, is going to modify the understanding of construction if it's passed by the Senate and if it's signed by the governor, so...
This is in the Commonwealth?
Yes.
I doubt it's Commonwealth. I'll bet you it's...
Oh, he won't sign it, but it's a...
That's all I have.
Okay. Anything else on that section?
Can we go to the first agenda item?
The audience comments, for everybody's information, are deferred until we get past this emergency. If anybody has any comments, they can send them as an email or a...
Did I need a comment? We did not, I got one inquiry that was actually on something not related to the...
Yeah. If there are any, you know, you can send them into the township and they'll be discussed if there's something to discuss. There is no unfinished business. First piece of new business is a request to donate property to Peters Township.
So we were contacted by the attorney representing the state of Niagara-Holt. They have offered to donate two parcels of land to the township. The two parcels are located at the corner of Robin Hood Lane and Senator Church Road, and together they represent about 1.1 acres of land. That drawing, I need to show you where those are. What is on that site is a, a pump jack and a, a tank for, for storing oil. The, I was talking to the attorney today, he believes that this well is still, still active. I don't know that for a fact.
I believe it is.
Yeah, so, you know, I don't think, quite frankly, that this piece of property has a lot of value to the township for public use, and therefore, my recommendation, we not accept the offer.
We're not getting the oil rights with it presumably, right?
No.
Well, I, I would imagine they're, they're upon how much it costs to plug it and abandon it.
Well, they had a for sale sign there for a while. They were trying to sell it as a lot. And I'm guessing whoever went to try to build a house on it probably figured out exactly, Gary, how much it would cost to plug that well. Which is why they're... Let's be on, no one is offering you an acre in Giant Oaks if they can make any use out of it, okay?
Yeah, I could say, can you imagine that?
A quarter lot in Giant Oaks, which they wanna give us for free. I'll make a motion that we, that we decline the, this offer.
I'll second it.
Okay. Discussion? In favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We respectfully decline.
Okay. The Santos area council of governments has opened bids for spring commodities. The one commodity in which we are required to issue a contract is for bituminous surface materials. What you have in the docket is a bid tab showing the price from Hanson Aggregates as well as Uriva Atlantic Coast. We actually, as normally award to multiple contractors because it isn't always possible to get asphalt from the, from either plant at the time we need it. So it's my recommendation that the township accept the bids from both of these firms for bituminous materials and the prices specified in the shake-off bid.
So move.
Second.
So Paul, you're saying that this one up from last year?
This is actually slightly down from last year, but the paving programs price per yard of asphalt is actually up.
So, could you clarify though? In the past, we, they passed on increases to us, so if it goes down...
There's an escalator and a de-escalator clause in this shake-off.
So we then anticipate a de-escalation?
Well, it, it will change.
When will that, when will that escalator price be backed up? What's the effect of that?
You know what? I don't know that off the top of my head. I'd have to pull out that bid specification.
Okay. Motion?
I'm in, Mike.
Oh, okay. Oh, I see, you did, I'm sorry. Yeah, okay, uh, okay, in, in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Sorry. Okay, award a bid for 2020 Peters Road Paving Program.
So the 2020 Peters Township budget contains an appropriation of $1,670,000 for the road maintenance program. And as was envisioned at the time of the budget, $1,535,000 was to be allocated for the paving program. $125,000 was to be allocated for the rejuvenator program, and $20,000 was to be allocated for crack sealing. What you have in your docket and what's on the screen here is the bid tab for the 2020 Road Paving Program. It is Mr. Zomitis's recommendation that we award the base bid to independent enterprises for $1,538,360.50. The thing that I would point out to you is that we also had anticipated doing some additional work with an in-house paving program. I don't know that that's gonna be possible if we award this contract. Mr. Zomitis is of the opinion that, that the work inside of this contract is of more importance than, than the work that would be done on the in-house program, and so therefore, that's why he's recommending this. We don't have experience with independent enterprises. We have talked to the, one of the principals, a gateway engineer who's worked with this firm on a project in Mount Lebanon, that was a site development project, who they had good experience with. We also talked with K L H, who is the engineer for Cannonsburg. They did their street paving program, they had good experience there. This is a Penn Dock qualified contractor, so I don't know that there's any basis upon which not to award the contract to the company, so...
Paul, have we worked with the second super low level, really, really at all?
Yes.
Good experience with them?
Well, the, the...
'Cause here's where I'm going with this. In Mark's report, he mentioned about potentially having to have Gateway come in for oversight. And I think that $20,000 difference, we could blow it through that in Gateway churches if we're gonna have them up.
Well, I, I don't know that I would necessarily agree with Mark that Gateway's gonna have to come in because I think Jason has done a very good job with this. I, I think if you attempt to go to that second highest bidder, what you're gonna have to do is reject these bids and go back out the bid. And that doesn't necessarily mean that you're gonna get a different result. I, I can't guarantee you that.
One, one point I would make, actually, when we had experience with the second highest bidder, their foreman now works for the lowest bidder.
Yeah. Yeah, their foreman's without, yeah.
All right, I'll make a motion that we award the bid to independent enterprise in the amount of $1,538,367.50 for the 2020...
Okay, discussion? In favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next item, approval of Just About Farms Phase Two Final Plan as shown in drawings prepared by JMS Engineering.
Okay, so this is the second phase of, of Just About Farms Plan. The planning commission approved the preliminary plan on August 10th of 2017. Council approved that plan on September 25th of 2017. So what's remaining of this plan are these 19 lots. This is, gives you an idea of, of what this looks like today. What they're talking about is this extension that takes you back out to Bowery Hill Road that goes this direction.
Well, that's an old picture.
Well, this is a, from Google.
And that's gonna include the raised intersection on Bowery Hill Road, right?
So, it's, these 19, 19 lots, and the types of homes that were rebuilt, built in that location, you know, this is a sample of that, so...
The majority of those don't look like patio homes. They seem like they're actually single-family, family homes. And if they wanted to be in a conservation, up close and personal situation, they're going to be able to have conversations window to window. I'll make a motion that we approve Just About Farms Phase Two Final Plan as shown on drawings prepared by JMS Engineering dated March 23rd this year for just about development, subject to conditions contained in Mr. Zol's report dated March 26th.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next item is resolution amending Peters Township Act 537 Sewage Facility Plan.
Take care of this plan that we just voted on, correct?
No, it's the next plan.
No, it's the different one.
I thought it was this one.
So, the Rebel Plan of Lots is actually a 10-acre parcel of ground that, that sits at the corner of Turkeyfoot and Churchill Road that is being divided into two lots. The plan, on, on the, the plan drawings, there's a condition that says there'll be no further subdivision of, of that lot. So it will always be at least four acres. What is required in addition to the other approvals would be a departure to be able to allow another driveway under Collector Street. But the first action that, that you need to take is to amend the 537 Sewage Facilities Plan to provide access to sewerage for the Rebel Plan of Lots, and it's my recommendation that we do that.
Would we have to recommend the law in the plan first before you do...
No, because you can't subdivide unless he has access to sewers, so we need sewers first.
But who owns this property? Is it owned by the same person?
It's, well, it's the, the person who owns lot one.
Owns two?
Yeah, owns two, and that, that second lot is gonna be...
So he'll keep, it'll keep the cleaning green then?
Well, no, it won't be...
No, he, no, he's selling off lot two.
Oh, is he gonna sell off the lot?
I'd imagine, otherwise he'd have no reason to subdivide.
That's what I'm saying. Why, why would you wanna do all those...
'Cause he's selling off lot two.
Do you have a resolution number?
It would be Resolution 40120.
I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 040120, amending the Peters Township Act 537 Sewage Facility Plan.
Excuse me, isn't it Peters Creek?
It's the Peters, they, they, no, the Act 537 Plan is actually a document of the township. It affects Peters Creek...
Okay.
But the plan is our plan.
That was my question, trying to clarify that. Okay. Sorry for interrupting your motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. In favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Now we get to the plan. Approval of the, for recording purposes, of the Rebel Plan of Lots shown on drawing prepared by Lares Engineering and Surveying dated December 17th, 2019.
And again, all you're doing is approving that subdivision for reporting purposes.
Do we know which collector road this driveway is going on, do you?
I believe it is going on the Turkeyfoot. Thought we didn't have, is that, am I, am I incorrect?
No, you're correct.
What's that?
I thought we, we had an ordinance that said you could not...
You could not, and that's why when, by passing this, you're granting the departure from that regulation. That's been looked at by the traffic engineer, and particularly since you're only talking about one driveway, where if this in fact was developed as a plan of lots, you would actually have a roadway with, with many cars coming out. Mr. Mondry is of the opinion that this doesn't represent a problem based upon site distance and...
Regardless of where the driveway is?
Regardless of where the driveway is.
See, my question was, given the propensity of people to observe the speed limit, not so much, if we approve this, we have no liability because the owner asked for that?
We have, we have posed that question to Mr. Smith. Mr. Smith does not believe that this, that this results in any additional liability to the township.
So could there be a disclosure to the, whoever buys and builds?
I don't get that, no.
Well, no, I'm asking you, you're the legal guy, yes or no? What do you think?
Why, why would you even put a disclosure there?
It's gonna be a record, right?
Right, yeah.
Okay, as long as we're not...
No, I notice, I mean, as soon as that gets filed, I, is there any way that we can, out of condition, that the driveway would be subject to...
Approval of the, uh...
That's the location and all that?
Well, I think you could put it, that it's subject to the approval of the township. I, I don't have a problem with that, but I can...
But it's gonna go back to the traffic engineer?
It's gonna go back to the traffic engineer. I mean, that, that's why the traffic engineer was involved, making sure that it was...
All right.
See, I'm just looking at it, I'm concerned, like, if, if they put it on Turkeyfoot, I don't think there's an issue, as long as it's not right up at the top, 'cause not everyone observes that stop sign we put there.
Oh, really?
Yeah, well, yeah, big surprise, right? I mean, that's my concern, like, you know, if he puts it too close to the edge there, like, credit to the hill, people come up over the top, they may, you know...
Yeah, that's, that's what the traffic engineer's gonna look at.
I bet you they'd put it on Churchill.
I don't know about that.
Well, he has a bend in Churchill, then maybe that's...
Well, but what's that, the easement go across there, where it's inked down?
They love to gas hunt.
So the house is gonna be further up behind it, obviously, so...
But still, you don't, you know, it might be more difficult to traverse that.
Look at the way that, the way that land lays, as I recall, most likely, the house is gonna face Turkeyfoot anyway.
Well, it's gonna come back to the township and the traffic engineer, so...
Have fun, I just, I have a question. So I'll make a motion that we approve it, subject to whatever conditions planning is required.
And, and the granting of the departure for the, any departure with the, with the driveway.
I'll second.
All right. In favor?
Aye.
Payroll and bills?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I review your payroll statement. Payroll was 98,000. Two runs of checks for accounts payable. We did have a few larger payments in there for things we have approved prior, previously, and I recommend that we approve the bills and pay them as posted.
I'll second.
In favor?
Aye.
Anything under correspondence we need to be aware of, Mr. Low?
Just a couple things. One, I, I did, wanted to point out to you that, you know, that one of the things the township does is participate in the municipal risk program for providing workers' comp insurance. Based upon our perform, our safety performance, we are eligible to receive refunds. This year, the township has received a refund of $131,000, which represents 45% of the actual cost of workers' comp. And quite honestly, I think that, that is in part due to the efforts of the safety committee that, that Ryan chairs, so, I mean, that's good news in terms of that. As I told you previously, there's a letter in here from DEP concerning the permit for Rolling Hills Drive. There's also a letter in here from the RV Corps of Engineers indicating that the permit can be issued for Rolling Hills Drive. What isn't in here is the letter from the Department of Transportation. So as soon as we hear from, from the Washington Conservation District, that can go ahead. There's actually a pre-construction meeting scheduled this week with the contractor, so... That's all I got.
Okay. Anybody wanna talk about any minutes from any of the other boards and authorities? Okay, miscellaneous?
What about the, did we get a letter, something, somebody put the burning?
We did. Someone, we've actually been contacted twice on this. A concern that during this period, that we eliminate all burning in the township. So, and at least in the case of the one, it was actually recreational fire in the backyard that they were, they were, someone else was burning of, of materials, you know, sticks and things like that, so...
Well, that's my concern. If you want to burn it completely, if you wanna ban it completely, you're gonna have that whole argument about, I'm doing a campfire in my backyard, or I can't light a bonfire in my backyard.
What does burning have to do with virus?
Right.
Well, I think the thought is this, that the virus is a respiratory thing, and so somehow, that's what the connection is, so...
Yeah, my neighbor's, one of my neighbors has the, uh...
Fart, but, we've got...
He has like one of those burn barrels. It's inside.
Oh, yeah.
You know, the little metal things? What are they called?
Wood stove.
And when they burn, it's worse than if I burned, you know, a big pile of sticks.
If you burn wood, it's always going to have a smell, it's always going to produce, but it doesn't have.
If you, if you do that, we're going to get into that same argument that we had a few years ago about, well, you know, what, you know, if my fire is this big, or this big, or this big.
Well, I'm not disagreeing with you. I just felt that somebody went out of their way to send us an email that burned it, blew through it, not even.
Do you know where they live? Because it's not on the, it just wasn't on the email.
Stratford Manor. I looked it up. Because I was curious, because we've had that problem, my neighbor, ever since everyone's been home now, everyone seems to be.
Well, it might not be a bad idea to like maybe republicize the, the burning times and the dates.
And what you can burn, too.
And what you can burn.
You know, people who are lighting up their garbage now because they can't fit it all in their garbage can.
Yeah.
But that's just one of the points, and that segues into a question I had asked. We were told Peters cannot quit out brush or any of that stuff, and that's a lot of the people were burning. Yet Waste Management added that pickup to Bethel Park. So would you ever find out why we were shut off and they were added on?
And I, I asked that question to my Chris, who's the government affairs officer, and he claims that that is not the case.
What was published in the OMA, where's Perry?
I don't know. I can't tell him.
I talked to somebody the other day, they told me they put their sticks out, they just tie them up and Waste Management takes.
And they will normally, but, and they're, they're required to take.
Whether there's.
They're required to take bulk items and they're required to take crass, but they're not doing that during this period. They're having a real problem. I don't know if you noticed what happened in the news with the city of Pittsburgh haulers. They're having a problem maintaining their staff for hauling, and part of it is this concern about handling all this material. So what they have said in Peters Township is we've got automated collection, we have these large containers, get it in the container. If you have crass and you want to bag it, what they're suggesting is to get another container and take those plastic bags and put it in there, and they have no problem picking that up. It's just that they don't want their, their people off the truck handling all sorts of material and then having a problem, so.
Well, and, and that goes back to what Frank said about the burning. I think people are just burning.
But we are not doing public works rush pickup with a chipper.
You know, there are a couple of people calling me about that after the storms last week, whether or not we are still chipping limbs. We're not doing that right now.
Well, I mean, we're, you know, you think about it a little bit. I mean, we, we are creating some problems that people are going to come up with some creative solutions for.
And it's not, I mean, if you're going to burn limbs and that, that's fine, just they need to be dry and they'll burn out.
I save mine up, and then when they get to like a, not five feet tall, but two or three feet, then I just burn. They burn in like 10 minutes.
Right, well, I got, the only thing is when you get people like, someone who lives down the street from me who feels that he has to throw gasoline on top of it.
Oh, well, that's not a good idea.
You know, it's like, it's a different story.
Seasons pass with the fire department.
Gas is cheap now, I understand, still.
Well, but I mean, yes, there are people that burn garbage along with it, but, okay.
I just thought, I just wanted, but maybe we could put something on the website to remind people the dates and the times of burning.
Yes, we can do that.
Okay. Anything else, miscellaneous? Okay, next agenda?
I had asked Mr. Chairman if we would have the opportunity to review the new sign ordinance, and you seem to think that we might have that.
Yes. I, I'm hoping sometime this week that we can do that, but I got to tell you, I don't, I don't know how many people were on council the last time we revisited the sign ordinance. That ordinance needs to be circulated through the business community before it ever thinks it's coming here or it thinks it's going to the plating commission, because the last time we did this, we, we just brought out all kinds of people.
They stormed the Bastille.
What's that?
They stormed the Bastille.
Yeah, and, and I think in fairness, I, I think part of that was in retrospect, they didn't feel that they had an opportunity for, for input. So what our intention was to work through the chamber and even look at perhaps hosting a meeting, a virtual meeting with the business community, so they could take a look at this thing and understand what the changes are and what's the motivation. So, but we can get a draft at council.
I would think that the chamber and the rotary would both be where they're happy to, I mean, we belong to both groups, so.
Yeah, so.
I don't need a draft. It must be circulated, because it might change.
Yeah.
Exactly. Circulate it first.
For next meeting, since it'll be the 27th, prior to May, you talked about revisiting